Good evening and welcome to the April 18th, 2022 meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Domaret.
Present.
And Commissioner Wright.
Present.
Okay, we're gonna commence with a salute to the flag. Commissioner Godwin, would you mind leading this in the salute?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first item of administrative business is approval of the Order of Agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Ferguson.
I move that we approve the Order of Agenda.
And Chair Hauser, it would be in order to take public comment on all the administrative business items first before entertaining motions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, let's, are there any public comments on the Order of Agenda?
There are no callers for public comment.
Okay. Okay, well, I believe we have a motion from Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, still move we approve the Order of Agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Godwin.
I second the motion.
Okay, may we have a roll call vote, please?
We can use the voting machines here now that we're in person, so please, commissioners, register your votes on the motion. And that motion passes unanimously.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from March 7th, 2022. Does anyone have any comments on the, on the minutes? I do have one. No? Okay, seeing none, I'll add my comment. So on page four, if you could just change it to Commissioner Hauser, she.
Noted, thank you.
Can we have a motion on the approval of the minutes? Commissioner Ferguson.
I approve to include the minutes as included in the agenda packet.
Commissioner Ferguson, is that motion with the amendment requested by?
Yes.
Chair Hauser?
There's a second. Commissioner Godwin.
I second the motion.
Okay. So I guess we'll vote?
Yes, you can call for the vote, please, Chair.
All right, let's vote.
Looks like we're missing one vote.
I abstain, I wasn't here, so I can't, I don't feel confident to comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
All right, well, Mr. Murdock, it does look like we have a designation of liaison to the city council meeting. Can you give us a little bit of background on that?
Yes, just one moment. So the prior motion passed for in favor, non-opposed, with Commissioner Wright abstaining. And with respect to the liaison to the city council, that would be in anticipation of the Planning Commission taking a recommendation action this evening on Agenda Item Number Two related to the text amendment. Based on the scheduling, it wasn't clear initially at publication of this agenda that we would have a meeting on May 2nd to appoint a liaison, and so we were taking the opportunity here. So we can revisit that as necessary, but we'd like to seek a liaison this evening.
Okay. Are there any volunteers?
Remind me the date one more time?
May 2nd.
Well, Chair, hearing none at this time, we do anticipate having a Planning Commission meeting on May 2nd, and so we can revisit the opportunity to designate a liaison at that time if necessary.
Okay, and Commissioner, sorry, I thought, you have something?
Sorry.
Okay, well, let's revisit it. All right, so now we'll move on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Audience members present in person who wish to comment during this meeting should fill out a yellow speaker card located at the table in the back of the room. On the card, please indicate the Agenda Item number on which you wish to comment upon or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Please bring the speaker card up to staff, who will provide it to me, and I will call each speaker for their public comment opportunity. The city is also piloting a call-in option to provide live public comments by phone. The phone number and conference ID are listed on tonight's agenda. Those wishing to comment should call in at the time the Agenda Item they wish to comment upon is announced. They will be placed in a call queue and remain on hold. Staff will monitor the call queue. If the queue reaches max capacity, callers should call back until they are able to be placed in the queue. Once in the queue, callers should be able to hear the audio of the meeting through their phone. Callers should mute the background sound from TV or live stream once connected by phone and listen through their phone to avoid any potential delay, as the TV live stream of the meeting may experience some lag time as compared to real time. They will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. Once the caller completes their public comment time, they will be disconnected. If they wish to comment on another item, they should call back when the Agenda Item is announced, and I believe that callers will be pressing star six to unmute themselves, which I think staff will explain again at the appropriate time. So with that being said, are there any oral communications tonight? Anyone by phone?
There is no one on calling in.
Seeing none, we'll close oral communications and we'll move on to new public hearings, seeing that we have no consent items tonight. So the first item on our agenda, S-135-21, is a sign permit, sign permit S-135-21 for a master sign program at 580 Cressby Drive. And staff, may we have a presentation?
Thank you, Chair. Assistant Planner Jamie Moser will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Moser, Assistant Planner, and tonight I'll be presenting the Master Sign Program for the Pacifica Commerce Center at 580 Cressby Drive. The site is surrounded by a self-storage business to the east, Lindemar Station, United States Post Office, Cabrillo School, and a small retail commercial center to the north, an undeveloped lot, and Pacifica Community Center to the west, and a single-family residential neighborhood to the south. The project site is a multi-unit business park comprised of two buildings. The Master Sign Program includes design and material standards for four sign types, including a freestanding monument sign, business wall signs, suite identification wall signs, and business window signs. The business wall signs for the A suites of the development, shown in red on the site plan, would have interior illumination. The business wall signs for the remaining suites, shown in blue on the site plan, would be non-illuminated. The proposed freestanding sign would replace the existing freestanding sign and would be eight feet tall by eight feet wide, which will provide the center visibility along Cressby Drive. The freestanding sign would have a wood panel background with charcoal gray lettering to match the trim on the building. The base of the freestanding sign would be covered with stone veneer, which would complement the wood details. This site plan shows the proposed monument sign to be installed in the same location as the existing monument sign along Cressby Drive. The business wall signs would be charcoal gray cabinet signs with routed cabinet faces backed with acrylic white plastic. Signs with one line of text would have a height of eight inches, a width of nine feet, and an area of six square feet. Signs with two lines of text would have a height of 11 inches, a width of nine feet, and an area of 8.25 square feet. The proposed Master Sign Program specifies a single line or two lines of copy for business wall signs, which will include the name of the business and possibly a tagline. The applicant has clarified that logos will not be permitted on the business wall signs. This is an elevation and plan view for a business wall sign that is non-illuminated. The window signs for the tenant identity have a height of two feet, a width of two feet, and an area of four square feet. The hours of operation have a height of 10 inches, a width of 1 foot 4 inches, and an area of 1.10 square feet. The suite ID wall signs would be a routed aluminum panel sign painted charcoal gray to match the business wall signs and building trims. These signs have a height of two feet, a width of two feet, and an area of four square The project qualifies for Class 1 and Class 11 exemptions under Secret Guideline Sections 15301 and 15311, as detailed on the slide. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission finds the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves sign permit S-135-21 by adopting the resolution included as attachment to the staff report, Attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval and Exhibit A to the resolution. That concludes my presentations, and staff is available if there are any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for that presentation. Before we move on to public comment, does anyone from the commission have questions for staff? No?
I did have one quick clarifier myself. The vinyl signs that are referred to on the site plan in the Table of Contents as V-designator, I didn't see them on the site plan, and I just wanted to make sure that those vinyl signs are the same as the cutout signs that you showed on one of those images with the hours and the store logo above, and not like a banner.
Sorry, which sign were you referring to?
If you look at packet page 54, it's the last item in the Table of Contents, storefront vinyl, V. And, you know, maybe we can, it's probably not material, we can maybe move on to public comment and come back to it later. Okay. All right, so with that, I'd like to open this matter for public comment. Okay, seeing as we have no in-person speakers, is there anyone on the phone?
There are no callers for public comment. Okay, so with that, we'll close.
And Chair Hauser, we may want to offer the applicant an opportunity to present the project.
Oh, of course. Is the applicant present? Hi, yes. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Ford. I'm representing the sign company that designed the Master Sign Program. I don't have a separate presentation in addition to the staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll come back, were there public comments on the, on the phone? We said no. There's no callers. Okay. Does anyone on the commission have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Domaret?
Just a quick question. In the near term, these units are all going to be sold as business condominium units, correct?
When you say business condominium units, I'm intrigued.
Well, they, in one of the thing, one of the things that came to the commission, they were called condominium units, so they're not live-in condominium, they're work condominium. I never liked the term condominium, but that's what they're, that's what they're called. So these units will have, I assume, a business owner's, kind of like a homeowners' association, but a business owner's association. These kinds of things would be under the guidance of the association, would that be correct? So this isn't going to impact anything that future owners may want to change or anything like that?
You're correct, Commissioner Domaret, that the subject site has undergone a condominium subdivision. It's a form of ownership, most commonly for residential purposes, but not exclusively. And in this case, the condominium subdivision for commercial purposes was approved by the city. The property owner is still in the process of effectuating that approval. I can't say specifically where they are in that stage, but they've obtained all of the city approvals, and I believe they're working through the State Department of Real Estate approvals that are required prior to sale. And so among the many, you know, post-approval, pre-sale requirements was to work through covenants, conditions, and restrictions, or CCNRs, for the common interest development, i.e. condominium. And one of the specific provisions was that the association that manages the site and that's responsible for maintenance and so on will also be responsible for implementation of the Master Sign Program. And so this is one of the required components of that post-approval, to come in and update the sign program if and when they desire to change the signage.
So that connection was kind of what I was heading at.
Yes, we've anticipated that connection, and there's a responsible party that the management association of the owners, similar to a homeowners' association, will manage this administration of this for the property owner's side.
Good, thank you.
Do I have to formally close public comment? Is that, okay, then we'll formally close the public hearing. Okay.
And then bringing it back to the commission for deliberation.
Yes, thank you. So do any commissioners want to start, or do any commissioners have questions? I did want to follow up on my question, and I don't know if it's something that maybe the applicant would, would answer if, if staff is not sure, but I wanted to get the clarification on the, on the vinyl, and then I had one more question for staff.
I can, yeah, the storefront vinyl is what's shown on the, I mean, I don't have the, the entire package with me, but it's what's shown on this.
Got it, okay, so not, not like a vinyl banner?
No, no, this is what they're referring to as the storefront vinyl, which is basically the suite identification and the transom window, and then obviously the, the name of the business, and then hours of operation.
I thank you for that clarification. And a lot of the signage, you know, when I went by the site, a lot of the signage seems to already be in really good condition and up there already. Is this, you know, just to kind of formalize the sign program and make a couple of changes, like to the monument sign, or were there other, are there other kind of big changes that this encompasses?
Yeah, so what's up there right now is a lot of the tenants already have window vinyl. That may or may not, I don't know if that was existing under the previous sign program. The main changes are the monument sign. It looks like some of the tenants have put up like a temporary vinyl on the new facade, but this, these will actually be separate signs once this is approved. So I think that's just a temporary identification they've got up on the facade right now, which is just a vinyl.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then my last question for staff was, we looked at a sign program recently where we had talked about, you know, prohibiting neon signs and all of the things that are already in our, in our code, and I was wondering if staff could just give a little bit more background again for the benefit of people who may be watching to understand what's part of our code and, you know, what does not have to be in the sign program.
Certainly. And so, as you mentioned, Chair Hauser, with the prior Master Sign Program for the Eureka Square Shopping Center, there were questions about, well, I commonly see prohibitions on various types of signs. Neon was one of the examples, as you mentioned. And it was my opinion at that time, and it remains my opinion, that while it may be fine to include that, it's not required. The Master Sign Program cannot authorize signs that are otherwise prohibited by the Pacifica Municipal Code. And so whatever various types of signs are currently in the municipal code as prohibited sign types would not be allowed under any circumstances. And conversely, only those signs authorized in the Master Sign Program may be installed at the site. And so it's a, you know, belt and suspenders type of approach, that we're confident that the only allowable types of signs are those approved in the Master Sign Program.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Okay, well, if, if any commissioners have thoughts, or if anyone's willing to make a motion?
It seemed consistent with everything else we've seen from signs, I'm willing to make a motion. That's agreeable? Hit the button.
Is there a second for that motion?
Do you want me to read the motion first?
Yeah. I would move that the Planning Commission finds a project is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and approves sign permit S-135-21 by adopting the resolution included as Attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A to the resolution, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Domaret?
Second.
All right, let's have a vote, please.
And that motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murdock. Moving on to item TA-121-22, this is a text amendment initiated by the City of Pacifica to extend the Growth Management Ordinance codified in Chapter 5 of Title IX of the Pacifica Municipal Code, which has a current termination date of June 30th, 2022. If that may, we have a presentation.
Thank you, Chair Hauser. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. I'm Deputy Director of Planning, Christian Murdock. In 1993, the voters of the City of Pacifica adopted ordinance number 604-CS to add a new Chapter 5 of Title IX of the Pacifica Municipal Code, or PMC. The ordinance is known as the City of Pacifica Growth Management Ordinance. The GMO contains three main components. A requirement for voter approval of any rezoning out of the A agricultural zoning district, change of the B lot size overlay district associated with an A-zoned parcel, or change to the uses or structures permitted on an A-zoned parcel. The second is a requirement for voter approval of any rezoning out of the HPD, or Hillside Preservation District, overlay zoning district, or change to the standards governing the HPD overlay zoning district in Chapter 4 of Title IX of the PMC. And the third main component is a residential development allocation process that establishes an annual allotment of 70 new residential units per year, exempts certain types of dwelling units from the requirement to obtain a residential development allocation, and imposes distribution and phasing criteria for the allocation of those residential development allocations. As enacted by the voters, the GMO had an initial termination date of June 30th, 1997. The city council has adopted several ordinances to extend the termination date of the GMO, most recently with the enactment of ordinance number 817-CS in 2017, to extend the GMO for five years until June 30th, 2022. Staff proposes extending the GMO for five years to June 30th, 2027, and making clarifying changes so that the dates referenced in PMC Sections 9-5.07 and 9-5.08 pertaining to agricultural land and hillside protection respectively also reflect the five-year extension. Staff proposes not making any changes to the RDA provisions, the residential development allocation provisions, specified in PMC Section 9-5.03, 9-5.04, 9-5.05, and 9-5.06, as these provisions are not currently enforceable pursuant to Senate Bill SB 330. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for staff?
I think I'll hold my question.
Commissioner Domaret?
I guess the, the big picture in my mind is, we, we extend this for five years, we have a master plan that we're now working on, are those being synced together? In other words, the five years doesn't lock us in. If the master plan says we want to make changes to that, we can. In other words, you see what I'm saying? How we, how will we take what results we have in the master plan that can then fit in this? That will be allowable within that five-year period, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, Commissioner Domaret, I think there's two parts to the answer that I want to provide to you. So the first part of your question is related to, are they in sync, and could we revisit this as a city if, for whatever reason, a five-year extension doesn't make sense next month, or the month after that, or the following year, for example? The answer is yes. This ordinance is being enacted by the city council and can be amended by the city council. However, that would be unconventional. I'm not aware of an example when that has occurred since the initial and subsequent extensions. I think the second part of your question is, to what extent does this ordinance affect the capacity of the city to comply with its regional housing needs allocation or arena for the nearly 1,900 units the city is obligated to plan for over the next eight years? The simple answer to that is that this ordinance and the HPD overlay, for example, do not regulate uses of land, per se. They don't put any limit on density, for example. Simply, this is governing the voter approval requirements to remove that zoning overlay, for example, in the instance of the Hillside Preservation District. And so the general plan and the zoning that combines with this overlay is what regulates the density and allowable uses of land, and that's still subject to the city council's discretion.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I noticed when I was reading through this that a number of the documents such as financial statements and references were quite a ways in the past, and it seems like we ought to insert some sort of statement like and subsequent to that to indicate that we are aware of more recent documents, and this ordinance is compatible with the, with all the budgets from then until now.
Every extension has not added findings or updated those, and so it may not have synced with the previous extension process, so we generally don't recommend that.
Yeah, Commissioner Godwin, I think it's our opinion and perspective that these ordinance, this ordinance in particular, and the prior extension ordinances are simply reauthorizing the prior ordinance that was enacted by the voters. And so I think it's our opinion that it would be advisable to remain consistent with those prior extensions, to add a five-year term, but not seek to go back and, and change various components of the findings section, for example.
Well, I think perhaps, you know, a recital in the Planning Commission's resolution, if it takes action to recommend this, might be a place to reflect your opinion and judgment on that. That would not require amending those findings, for example. And so that's something that Assistant City Attorney Sharma and I can discuss further as a potential option, if we understood more about specific elements that you think need to be validated or otherwise addressed in that statement.
Anything else, Commissioner Godwin?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Well, I had a couple of questions that I appreciate staff answering in advance of the meeting, but I did want to ask one on the record, and I wanted to understand the five years versus 20 years, or 10 years. What was the thought process behind the five?
Sure. So in the original Growth Management Ordinance, the voters provided for a five-year initial term to the GMO, and each extension since then has been a five-year extension. And so in this instance, we've prepared the ordinance consistent not only with the original GMO, but the multiple subsequent extensions. And I think it's our opinion that a five-year term is an adequate balance of certainty and protection combined with the ability and requirement, in fact, in the ordinance to revisit it after, I think, a three-year period to determine whether, you know, it ought to remain in place at the end of that five-year term. And so I think consistency with the original enactment and the subsequent extensions is our justification for recommending a five-year term.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we'll open the public hearing, and I want to remind that audience members who are present in person who wish to comment during the meeting should fill out a yellow speaker card located at the table in the back of the room. Do we have any speaker cards? I think, I think I see one.
There's one here.
Okay.
I'm getting in practice of getting back to real life. So the mask, I'm all in favor of the mask, but I have to say it's hard to hear. Commissioner Goodwin, I couldn't hear three-quarters of what you said. But I really appreciate what Department Chair Murdock said about the public vote, and that's mainly my main thing, is always to stick up for the public vote. I'm kind of concerned, like we mentioned, SB, whatever the number is, where electeds are telling locals, especially voters, what to say and think. And I hope that our city government and appointed stick up for the voter. It's very scary. When you look at Russia, the people there have a vote, they have no power. We don't want to be in that position. We want to have every voter's rights respected, and a time honored is also agriculture and hillside preservation here, so whatever you can do to stick up for the voter's rights, I really thank you so much as a fellow voter. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? All right, well, I would like to remind viewers who are listening in to call in now if you wish to comment by phone on item two. I think we'll give, if there are other speakers or other callers? There is one member of the public with their hand raised.
There is one member of the public with their hand raised.
Okay. So, reminder to press star six to unmute, and if staff has any additional information on the logistics, please go ahead.
Yeah. Phone number ending in 9182, please press, what is it, star six to unmute and begin speaking.
Hi, this is Christine Bowles. I'm not sure if you can hear me?
Can you speak a little bit louder, Ms. Bowles? We can hear you, but just barely.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Murdock for bringing this to your attention today. I think it's really important for this ordinance to be renewed. I've been spending a lot of time over the winter break researching the origins of our HPD ordinance, and I just want to share a few things with you to show you what a process it was that really involved a lot of public input. There were actually eight Planning Commission meetings to hear the ordinance and make, you know, amendments along the way. There was a lot of public input. And then there were six City Council meetings, so a total of 14 public hearings just for this one ordinance. And then I was reading some articles in the paper from the 70s when the ordinance was approved, and I'll just read you a couple. This is from November 1971. Les Clark, who was the Planning Director at the time, said he estimates that there are about 5,400 acres of untouched land in Pacifica, 2,800 of which are developable. The balance is on hillside of 35% grade or more, too steep to develop. Preservation of steep land in excess of 35% grade is a top priority, said Clark. Such land should not be developed. And then in June of 1972, there was a contentious Planning Commission hearing where a developer was complaining about the ordinance, saying 70% of the remaining land in Pacifica will have to remain undeveloped if this ordinance is approved. And one of the Planning Commissioners, Lee Forster, replied, "You're finally getting the point. That's exactly what the citizens of Pacifica expect from this ordinance." I'll share more with you. There's lots of good articles. The city was so proud when the ordinance was approved, and this additional ordinance that you're reviewing today really puts the will of the people at the forefront of this ordinance, and I really encourage you to reinstate it for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Is there anyone else on the phone who wishes to speak?
There are no other callers.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Does anyone have other questions or points of discussion?
Well, I do want to ask one thing that was brought up during public comment. Staff wrote up very nicely the RDA process and explained it a little bit in the context of the Housing Accountability Act and the state sunset laws. And I'm wondering if we could get a little bit more insight into how that works, and understand when the voters would have the rights again based on the Housing Accountability Act?
Sure. So, there's actually, among the many provisions in the Housing Accountability Act, first enacted in SB 330, one of them is express language in the statute that prohibits cities from implementing and administering any numerical cap on the number of housing units that can be permitted or constructed in simple terms. And so, that's the language that the staff is responding to in drafting this report and in making its recommendations on the ordinance. As far as the point at which the voters will have their authority returned to them and allow the application and administration of this process that's in the Pacifica Municipal Code, the current sunset date is 2034, January 1st of 2034. The legislature could modify that. They could make it sooner or later. There's no guarantee that the sunset will occur at that point in time, but under current law, January 1st of 2034.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Murdock. Well, if there are no items that anyone wishes to speak on, let's have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting used to the electronics in here. Commissioner Ferguson?
You asked the exact question I was going to ask, so.
Okay, fantastic.
Yep.
Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. Give me a few seconds here.
I think it's packet page 71.
I'm there. I guess I would move that the Planning Commission fines the proposed ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adopts the resolution included as Attachment A to the staff report to initiate text amendment TA-121-22, and recommend approval to the City Council and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, and as you were reading it, I remembered Commissioner Godwin that you may have wanted to add a finding into the resolution. Did we, I kind of skipped over that. Did you want to, were you interested in having that added, or a footnote?
I was interested in getting some reaction to it, seeing if that is, if the other commissioners thought that was a reasonable approach, given some of the documents referenced are in excess of 40 years old, others are 30 years old and greater.
Ms. Sharma, did you have a response to that?
So, the City Attorney's Office generally recommends that, consistent with the prior approach of merely extending the dates in the ordinance, that the findings remain as is. But if the commission wishes to entertain any additions or proposals, certainly we can consider exact, precise language. A footnote, I can't think of a way to incorporate a footnote about the current applicability of the, or to revise it in a way that doesn't touch or reopen the findings.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Ferguson. Do we have a second? Commissioner Don Marat?
Second.
All right, let's have a vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Moving on from public hearings to items for consideration. So, this is our annual reorganization of the Planning Commission. Recommended sequoia exemption, sequoia action, non-applicable. And so, I think the goal for tonight is to nominate Planning Commissioners to be elected as Chair and Vice Chair. We currently, our longstanding Chair is no longer with us, and I know Vice Chair Berman is not here tonight. But is there anything that we need to add on a staff level?
I don't think so, Chair Hauser. I would just say that we'll need two separate recommendations, and then we can take a motion to approve them together, or we can do it separately. Sometimes everyone's jumping to become Chair or Vice Chair, and maybe there's not agreement. It's hard to say, and the commission will need to deliberate more, but wants to settle one of them, for example, but we can guide you through that process.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson?
Would it be appropriate to wait until our very effective Vice Chair is present to discuss this?
It's at the commission's discretion. The bylaws do call for this to occur at the first meeting in April, and so we've already missed that opportunity. I did query Vice Chair Berman if she would be willing to accept a nomination to serve as Chair, and she said that she would if it was the pleasure of her colleagues. And so, if that gives you any, you know, assurance.
That was going to be my follow-up question.
Well, I personally, oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to, can we do a nomination at this point?
Absolutely.
That's at the chair's discretion. I would just ask before any motions entertained that we do open it up for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do we have any, do we have any speaker cards on this item? No? Are there any calls in by phone?
There are no members of the public with their hand raised.
Okay, so then we'll close public comment period. We'll bring it back to the commission.
And Chair, just before we move on, since it is a new procedure for the Planning Commission, perhaps we could just provide a moment for any member of the public that is dialed in that wants to speak to press star five to raise their hand.
Let's do that.
And wait just a moment, and then perhaps we can move on if nobody raises their hand.
There's still no hands raised. All right. So, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to Commissioner Don Marat.
So, I'd like to put forth a nomination of Chairman Berman as Chair of our Planning Commission. And do we, do a Vice Chair at the same time?
I think we're doing the Vice Chair separately. So, let's start with Chair Berman.
So, I would put forth that nomination.
Before we go to a vote, are there any thoughts on that, or any deliberation?
I would only ask if anybody else wants to be the Chair. I would certainly not be looking for it myself.
I think Commissioner Berman would be a great Chair. She's been a wonderful Chair when she's run our meetings in the past.
Basically, you've said yes already, so I think we got it. That's an easy one.
All right, so let's have a vote as to Chair Berman.
Do we require by rule that we have two candidates, or is one candidate sufficient?
One candidate is sufficient, and multiple candidates is fine, but it's harder for the commission to sort that out. So, it's convenient to have one.
I take it nobody else was interested?
I think that's true.
I think her, yeah, I think Vice Chair Berman has done a fantastic job. I think she would be a really wonderful Chair for us. So, okay, if we can have a vote on Vice Chair Berman becoming Chair Berman.
So, Chair Hauser, we had a nomination, but we would have a motion and a second for that action.
Yes, can you formalize your motion?
Still moved.
Okay.
I'll second the motion for Vice Chair Berman to be Chair.
All right. Have a vote now.
And that motion passes unanimously to appoint Commissioner Berman to serve as Planning Commission Chair.
Fantastic. Well, can't wait to welcome her back. All right. Any thoughts on Vice Chair?
I would apply some peer pressure to you. You did a great job today.
I would second that.
I would've heard that.
I will take it. Okay. Well, does anyone want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to nominate Commissioner Hauser as our Vice Chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, let's have a vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the communications portion of the agenda. I believe we have some commission communications tonight, but please go ahead and ring your button if you wish to speak. Commissioner Godwin?
Yes, I was the liaison to the City Council meeting during which we discussed the Olympia Way decision. And it turns out, that's been sent back to us as a Planning Commission. There were some issues about fire hose lengths. There was a significant discussion about drainage and a number of other issues brought up by the neighbors that the council felt was somewhat new information, so they'd like us to revisit that decision.
Thank you for attending that, for bringing that back to the commission. Are there any other commissioners who have a communication? All right, moving on to staff communications.
Thank you. Good evening again, Deputy Director of Planning Christian Murdock. I did want to also report back that the City Council has approved the legislative items, including a general plan amendment, and approved an ordinance which has not yet taken effect, to approve the rezoning, to plan development, and the development plan associated with the TBD Talbot Project. And so, that's the one that had a couple of hearings before the Planning Commission and a number of issues to work through. So, reporting back to the City Council, supported those recommendations and approved the project. I also want to report that unfortunately, on April 1st, that was the last day of city employment for former Assistant City Manager and Planning Director Tina Waremeister. She's moved on to a position in the private sector. She'll be dearly missed, but we sent her off the best that we could as her friends and colleagues on the city staff. The City Manager has appointed me to serve as the Acting Planning Director in the interim until he makes a personnel decision with respect to the Assistant City Manager and Planning Director positions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. All right, I think it's time for the portion of the agenda where we look at adjournment. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Chair Hauser, perhaps we would also offer Commissioner Wright an opportunity to introduce himself as our newest Planning Commissioner.
Well, first of all, welcome. It's so nice to have you on the commission, and if you would like to introduce yourself.
Well, my name is Greg Wright. I was interested in being of service, basically as part of my retirement plan. I'm not quite ready to be put out to pasture yet, and I'm looking for things to keep me busy and out of my wife's hair. So, I think this is a perfect opportunity. I have a skill set, the ability to read plans and convert 2D plans into 3D imaginations. So, I think I've also been through a number of projects, so I think my experience may lend a lot to the commission.
Well, welcome, Commissioner. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Hauser, if you'd give me a mulligan, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce Assistant Planner Jamie Mosler. She did a fine job earlier on one of the public hearing items, but we are so pleased to have her on the city team. This is her first Planning Commission meeting. Jamie started with the city in January, and so we're glad to, you know, be integrating her into the team and to have her here tonight, and I hope we have a long time ahead working together. She comes to us from the City of Sacramento, where she was a planner. I don't know if Jamie, you want to say any remarks on your own?
Yeah, I think you covered it all, but it's nice to meet you all and be here tonight. Welcome. We're happy to have your expertise in Pacifica. Thank you.
Any motions for adjournment? Commissioner Godwin?
I move we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.